City Council. That's a city council meeting. As I said before, if you have anything you wish to speak on during this meeting, please fill one of the forms out in the back of the room here and give it to Sadie. She will make sure I get it and we will read from that. So thank you. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Isles. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Sadie, can I roll call please?
Counselor Dunbar, here.
Counselor Gates.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Lidkey.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here. Thank you very much Sadie. We are now at the citizen group comment and the first person I have on here is Connie Redman. Is she on the Zoom?
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Oh fantastic, great. Thank you so much. Christina gave me some talking points, so this is going to be pretty brief. The chamber is actively working on 2022 business renewals and onboarding new business members. So if you hear of anybody that's new or wanting to maybe find a way to advertise their business, have them get in touch with the chamber. It's a great networking opportunity. The chamber is assisting a variety of local business owners with collaboration and social media guidance. And that right now it's a Spiral Gallery, the Library, Harmony, Timber Town Grub and White Owl Apers. And that's a fairly new business, so I need to find out more about them. The chamber is continuing to seek business recovery funding from state, county, federal resources. We have upcoming events. We have a community shred day on May 7th. And that's going to be in the parking lot right in front of the fire department. We have our fundraiser, which is going to be an online auction starting in late May and it will end with a final night reception on June 4th. That's really a really fun event, so I hope you'll be able to participate both in person or if not, in the online auction. Visit Estacada is actively working with media for promotions. Harmony Bakery Company was recently on KGW, early morning hours, but still it was a very good opportunity for Harmony. And KATU is going to be filming on the 31st in town. The chamber is actively engaged with ODOT and the Mountford National Forest for Highway 224 reopening. This chamber is actually going to be joining, going to join a guided tour of the area to just to see, you know, what's the latest status and when that will be open. The visitor kiosk at the entrance to Timber Park was renovated and then it was almost immediately vandalized. We have a repair cost proposal out and we'll just see, you know, what we can do to get that up and going again. It's a great opportunity to post some marketing posters and highlights of what you're doing at Estacada. And that's, that's it. Want to thank Christina and Nancy for their great job that they're doing promoting the chamber and visitor information for us at Estacada. Anybody questions? Anybody got questions?
Any questions for Connie? Oh, we thank you Connie for that update.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, next I have Brandy Licky.
Hi guys. I just wanted to first congratulate Melanie. I think you guys did a great job with that. And also we have a big, couple of big events coming up for ECW. The first one is not a huge event, but it's a good fundraising opportunity for us as our nonprofit. And that's on May 7th, we're doing a car wash. And then there's also going to be a community potluck with that. And then on May 28th, we're doing a really big carnival. It's going to be really cool. We're going to have a bunch of stuff to raffle off, a bunch of other things that we'll be doing for fun. So we'd love to see you guys there. I'd love to see some council members there and Melanie and all of you guys. We'd love to see you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, is there anybody else on the Zoom?
Actually Mayor had a question for her.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry. You said something about a potluck.
Yes.
Can you expound on that please?
Well, I wasn't going to, but I can. We're going to try to get a bunch of different, like, so everyone comes, they bring their favorite dish type of thing. So we can kind of see what everything Estacada has to offer. We're going to try to get some of the businesses in on this, some of the food carts in on it. I think it'd be really fun.
What time is that going to be?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
We haven't picked a time, but we'll make it soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No, that's good. You did great. All right, so nobody else on the Zoom. Okay. Great, then we will move on to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read it over in the minutes. Are there any questions, changes? Anything? If not, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, first, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
First and second, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We are now at Department of Committee Report. So I first have Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Marcus Mendoza, are you there?
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start off, again, thanks for having me. We'll start off and return to our request from the council at the last meeting that I attended for, there was a request for some statistical data specifically about traffic stops. And when I responded at that time, I believed that that information would be easy to get. And I had relayed that the state of Oregon collects that information. The sheriff's office is required to collect that information. Unfortunately, I maybe overpromised a little bit on how easy that would be. So we collect that information for our entire office and submit it to the state of Oregon. The state of Oregon then takes that information and analyzes the data and then produces a report. So that information actually belongs to the state of Oregon, specifically the Criminal Justice Commission. And I may have already said stop data and that is statistical transparency of policing data collection that was mandated by the Oregon State Legislature. So that information can be found if you go to, if you just Google DPSST, which is Department of Public Safety Standards Training, and then stop data, like the stop sign. And then that will take you to the report and explains what's in that report. So unfortunately, the breakdown of that information does not get as small as just the city of Estacada, it's the sheriff's office as a whole, which is how we report that information. Because the sheriff's office doesn't, like, essentially own that data, it's not our report. We have to just provide what the state provides. So I hope that answers the question that was posed last time, but that's where it can be found at DPSST and then search stop data. And then all of you were provided with the slides, actually a couple sets of slides. That was the annual report and then also a monthly. The last one was June. I think we're due here for February pretty quick. But the, I'd like to just bring attention to the 2021 annual slides and specifically looking through all this, the one slide that stood out to me that I wanted to talk about was slide number 10. Again, that's the annual report for 2021. And this one deals with traffic enforcement, traffic stops within the city of Estacada, within the city limits. And this one really just stood out to me when I was looking at this. You know, there's always a question of how many citations are written compared to warnings that were given. This slide breaks down that almost nearly 79% of all traffic stops result in a warning. And it was, sorry, I just dropped off your two. 2.4% resulted in a offense report or a criminal type of report. And then just under 20%, 18.7% resulted in a citation. So actually looking at those statistics, I actually, you know, I have a history in traffic enforcement, traffic safety, and I really like to see that. I like to see a lot of the education piece to that. When we're stopping people, we're maybe discussing what the violations are and how to fix that and having good driving behaviors. So I like to see that that high percentage of warnings and the good community contacts. And then last, another question had come up about the annual stats where the crime rate in Estacada. And so I wanted to point out a couple of things. One, there are, if you go to the sheriff's office website, about three quarters of the way down, you can select a tab or a button for statistics. And under that tab, you'll find the annual crime stats that are produced by the sheriff's office. And in those stats, it does break down specifically the city of Estacada. And it's actually side by side with our other contract cities, Happy Valley, Wilsonville, along with the county patrolled areas, which we call the inline and the outline area. Best way to describe that is the inline are going to be your more urban areas and the outline is the more rural areas. And when I look at the stats for Estacada, specifically the all crimes combined, and this is per 1,000. Estacada's stats are, the reports that are on there are 2019, 2020 and 21. So for the last three years, those statistics are available. In 2019, it was 64 crimes per 1,000. 2020, it dropped to 50.8 and then 2021 it rose slightly to 52.5. We all can probably agree that 2020 was a little bit of an anomaly. So it would be nice to see these projected out a little bit further than just these three years. But looking at this, we are seeing our crime rate went up slightly from last year, but it's down about 11 and a half points from 2019. So that question generally comes up about crime rates. And it also provides an average for all of the areas within Clackamas County. And we're actually, this year, or 2021, was right on par with the average. And, and last year was as well. If you, while you're on that website, one other thing that's pleased to announce that we are now offering an opportunity where you can go to our website and have access to a dashboard where you can look at calls for service and you can get as granular as the city of Estacada. So you can look specifically at the city of Estacada. If you search Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Dashboards, that page will come up. Along the top, there'll be buttons for each of the contract cities. Just select Estacada and it will take you straight to the city's dashboard. And I know it's the plan of the sheriff and the sheriff's office to provide in the future additional information that can be searched on that dashboard. But this is really your first look at it. This just went live and I think you'll be pleased with it. You'll be able to see some information there and search that on your own. And like I said, we'll continue to add to it so you'll be able to see some more information. And the last thing that I was going to mention is, is now that we're meeting in person, I do plan on coming in person, probably one of the next upcoming meetings. Be really nice to see everybody face to face. And happy to take any questions, anyone has any.
Hey, I just had a couple of quick questions. I was looking at some of the stats here. And I noticed that there was a pretty heavy jump in the harassment and menacing based over the last six months in February. Wonder if you could, yeah, anything you can expound on that and along with also the assistance of the public jump pretty heavy too in February.
Are you, you're talking about the February stats compared to?
Yeah, and I'm also kind of curious if that may have also been carrying over into this month as well, the type of numbers.
Yeah, I would, and what were the two again? I'm going to just jot it down.
Yeah, harassment and menacing jumped, it looks like it was averaging around three to five over the last six months. And then this month it's 12. And then assistance of public had been roughly about the same and then it's up at 14 this month, this last month in February, so.
I'm going to, I am jotting that down. I'll do a little research on that and I'll get you an answer.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious if it was something to do with, you know, weather changes coming out of COVID stuff or anything like that.
Yeah, it's probably difficult to say honestly month to month. But if we're seeing a, you know, if we continue to see an increase, I might look at the historical data and see what typically we have. And then probably have to look into each specific case to see if there's any correlation or relation to them.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Well, another one that stood out to me, it looked like four stolen vehicles last month in Estacada. It seemed higher and I know month to month it's hard to tell, but any insight into that would be appreciated too.
Sure, I can look into that. That would definitely be higher than normal. I remember looking at the historical and I think it was averaging maybe one a month. So that would be slightly higher. I can definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
It looked like, it looks like the three of the four stolen vehicles were all within a couple of blocks of each other.
Okay, yeah, and part of that could be, you know, a, you know, and this is just really speaking generally, but a specific person or a specific type of vehicle, or there could be some randomness to it. But I can look at those reports and try to determine that for you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? That's it? Hey, we thank you Marcus. That was a great in-depth report. We appreciate that. And we'll see you with the update information in the next meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are now at committee commission and liaison. I'm just going to look around if anybody's got one. Okay, Paul, we'll let you hit it first.
Sure, I met with the Estacada Public Library this past week. They have got a lot of programs going on. And rather than go through these one by one, I would encourage you to check out their Facebook page. A lot coming up in April and in May. And then the big news is that their library van also, they've got a mural created for it. A local artist has put this together. They're going to wrap it here pretty soon. And then they're working on unveiling ceremony as well too. So it should be a pretty big deal. This is awesome looking van and it's going to be a nice addition to Estacada.
Good, great. That sounds wonderful. All right, next. So, Jerry?
I don't really have a lot. I just want to invite everybody to come down to Harmony on, let me get the date up here. Sorry, I'm a little unprepared. On, I believe it's the ninth for One Page Wednesday at Harmony Bakery. It's put on by the Estacada Area Arts Commission and it's a great event. The last, you know, I've been to all but one and really enjoyed my time listening to the writers read their words. It's a really good experience and I'd love to see more people there.
All right, thank you Jerry.
I do want to just clarify because the ninth is a Saturday, so I know that. It's not.
I was on the wrong, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong day, the wrong month. It is the 13th.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you Jerry. And if there's nothing else, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Okay, I just have a, I don't want to stretch out your meeting that is going to be nice and concise tonight, but I have a few things that I wanted to share. At your last meeting, when you talked about a traffic and public safety committee that we would maybe be putting one of those together, that was one of your goals. There was a discussion as to whether to set up a new committee or to maybe delegate out those roles to other committees. And the majority of you felt that probably we needed a new committee. But as I was putting that together, I did take into consideration the other suggestions of potentially delegating roles that would be with that safety committee to other committees like Parks and Rec or infrastructure. And after looking at that, I do, I do feel that it needs to be a separate committee. So I appreciate the other, the alternative ideas. And I think it's great when you bring up alternative ideas and then we can always, you know, take a look at that. But so I will be working on getting the, it'll be an ordinance that Sadie will help me with, but getting the, you know, the logistics of how that will go patterned after Happy Valley. I'll work with Chief Mendoza as well. And so that will be moving forward. And then a second topic is yard debris. We have been getting more and more, I mean, I wouldn't say it's an overwhelming request for yard debris, but we do, we hear that frequently now. And the program, the two pilot programs we ran last year, the one in the spring and then the one in the fall, were very well utilized. I think there might have been, you know, some handful of people coming in from outside the city. You know, and we did, one time we had to dump it as garbage because somebody had put some plastic bags in there instead of the either no bags or the biodegradable. But for the most part, it was very, very well used. And I think everybody that used it really appreciated it. So I would be in, they're going to, they're going to get the container back out to the wastewater plant on Wednesday. So that will be opened back up and we'll put an announcement on the website and on Facebook too, so you can share that out. And hopefully that will be, because I know things are growing like crazy. But I would be interested in hearing from the council if you have an opinion on this. Is it time to start moving toward a curbside yard debris pickup? Because right now Arrow is bringing out the containers. And I don't think they're charging us for the drive time of switching them out, but the city's paying for the cost of dumping the yard debris. And because we know it's a service that it's needed, it reduces fire hazard, it makes neighborhoods more livable. But moving forward, is it time yet to start looking at curbside pickup? It'll cost more, but I kind of want to start working on that. I've wanted to start working on it for the last couple of years and since we did the pilot program. But I would kind of like to push on that a little bit with our haulers to say, you know, what can you do? How can, how can we make this happen? And there, I don't know what, I don't know any details of how it can. But yeah, if you guys want to say what you think.
Sure, let me hit you. Well, yes, I'd say push forward just because there are more residential areas that are being developed. And a lot of people, I mean, it's just kind of your standard neighborhood. They have nowhere else to put the grass other than their garbage can. My question is, so you mentioned Arrow, what about Walker?
Walker is a supportive partner in the, in the program, the pilot program that we have running. But, and we had thought about putting the container out at their property. So people would go out there to drop it off, but it seems to be like this can be locked up at night. So pretty much it was city and Arrow that was working on this, that was doing this. But I, I think, I know Walker was supportive of it, just not really able to participate as much.
Thank you Mayor. So yeah, I agree with definitely getting curbside. So that's always been supportive of that one. But I do, I did see the response the community had to the last one. They used it a lot and there's not, everybody can afford an extra, to pay that extra fee. So having something where we kind of like a hybrid, maybe where we have something that maybe at least once a year, where we do offer like a community drop off option for those who can't afford the extra charge. They have, once a year, they can have some sort of support from the city on that. But also the, I have something else in my head there. Oh, one of the things I heard a lot from people about was the hardship of hours because they tend to be open either really early or they close before they get off work or something. And so now that more people are going back into office, they're going to, they're going to have less flexibility even. So we might want to explore how we might be able to try to make it more available for people as well, so.
Okay. That brings up a good point about the cost of it. And I'm thinking now might be a good time to push forward with this because we're having, you know, for, I, it would be nice to have it as an add-on service and you just check that box if you want yard debris. And if you don't, then you don't. But I don't know how that works out financially for the companies hauling that yard debris. So it might have to be in across the board where everybody pays for it, whether you use it or not, which is, that's what is kind of a little concerning. But yeah, Counselor Strobel?
I was just going to say, it would be probably a first step to look into it and see what costs would be to see how they would maintain it. And I think that's what we're, we're at least in agreement to get things moving so that we can start exploring this.
Okay. And then speaking to the length of time it was open, we, it is, because it's at the wastewater plant, it's, they're open 365 days a year, but on the weekends, they're, they probably close before four. So it would be shut, it would just be open in the mornings on Saturday and Sunday. We thought about putting it just out in the portal where anybody could access it, but I just, I have a bad feeling about that, that it might, you know, that there might be certain people that might try to dump garbage and then it would kind of ruin it for the rest of everybody. So that's kind of why we have it locked up, yes.
Thanks Mayor. The, could we consider if the, you know, expounding, I know it's probably would push into some overtime for that time for to have someone come back and, you know, leave it open longer during the weekends and just have someone come back later on and close it up. I mean, if that's an additional cost we didn't incur, I mean, it's something we may have to consider that too. I just, like I said, I know it was a lot, some people couldn't take advantage of it because the timing just didn't work out with their work schedule. And I know we did the best we could on our end, but it's something just to consider if we're able to.
Yeah, I will take a look at that. I would, I think that we're probably, we have that issue with like locking restrooms also. We'd like to leave them open and have them closed later in the day. And so at this point, we haven't been able to manage that, but I'll, that's, it's a good point. It could be open longer. I don't have an answer for that right now though. And my thought about having the number of residences increased is like if we had, you know, 1,000 households getting residential garbage service to split up the cost of running a yard debris program curbside, it would be going over 1,000 residences. And as we add on, I'm hoping that's going to bring the cost per, you know, per customer down. So, but we'll, I'll look into, if that's okay with you, if you think it's a good thing to look at, we'll see what we can come up with costs and how a program like that might work. I know Arrow does it in other neighborhoods. And so I think that they should be able to help us figure it out and, you know, logistically and cost-wise.
Our franchise agreement is up really soon with the trash companies, isn't it?
It actually has five more years, but a five-year review this year, this summer. Yes, that's probably what you're remembering is it's a five-year review.
I think that that would be a really appropriate time to at least get more information from the companies that we currently have the contracts with and see what the options on the table are when it comes to yard debris service. And then really ask them what the long-term future of yard debris service looks like with them as well. So that when we go to renew at the next five-year franchise agreement or, you know, in the next five years, that we've got all of that information already anticipated.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you for that feedback. Also, I did hear, sorry.
Just one more question on the, and this is a question I think no one wants to ask, but you might be wondering, is, are we putting more cost on the citizens because we're splitting between two different garbage companies? Because they're having to do less, so they can't expound those expenses over more? Or would it be more advantageous to have just one company? And this is completely out of an experience in this area. So, I mean, is it something where they could, it would be cheaper because if they, if they service the whole, the whole city for one garbage company, because they could, the cost would be dispersed more, so therefore maybe it's cheaper. I have no idea.
That's a good question. And that's why it is a regulated, it's kind of, some people call it, it's like it's a monopoly. They have a franchise. Nobody else can come in and give a service or offer service. But it's, it's a regulated industry so that everybody gets comparable service for the same price. And so it doesn't cost anymore to have the two companies. And both, no matter who is your, who's servicing the address that you're at, it's the same cost and the same service level. And we do follow a lot with what Clackamas County does because they, they'll do an annual rate review. In fact, we'll probably have a recommendation for a rate increase this summer. For 10 years, over the prior franchise agreement, somehow it just, it just kept going and there was no rate increase through that 10 years, which is why then it jumped like. Somehow it just, it just kept going and there was no rate increase through that ten years, which is why then it jumped like thirty percent. After, you know, when it was renewed. And, um, I think everybody was getting a very good deal for those years. But also it's, it's a little painful to have a bill to jump that much, you know, all of a sudden. So, um, we'll try to follow with the, what the county does. And because, like, if you're driving out in the country, um, you know, you, you don't have as many, it's not as high density, whereas in town, I feel like they could stop, pick up garbage stuff. So every, every time they stop, pick up garbage, um, you know, that's another account. And so we have deep, we usually go a little less than what the county, um, charges out around us in the area. But they do very thorough rate review. And so we'll look at that and you guys can obviously make the, the final decision on that. But that's often the, the, um, data that we use to go off of. So, we will be doing that this summer.
Jerry and Justin, do you have anything you want to put in? No? And I think this is going to help us with code enforcement. As you well know, we're coming into the growing season and code enforcement goes up with, uh, yards that are looking a little shabby and it'll help us in that part of it too. So we always have to look at that. But I think, yes, the consensus is go ahead and start the process and let's look into that.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Keep moving right along. Um, oh, Jerry has a question.
Uh, not a question, just a comment. Um, code enforcement is doing an amazing job. Two cars on my street got, uh, flagged for, uh, towing because of expired tags. One of them just happened to be one of ours. Was on the street for two days and now it's back in the driveway, but, um, their code enforcement is doing a great job. So thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I know, co- I, I will say code enforcement is doing a great job. And since our current staff has been here, she has not had to go to court one time. It's been, it'll be three years this summer, I think, and she has not had to go to court. Granted, it was kind of some weird times in there, but she is so great at working with people, helping them to understand. She gets yelled at a lot, I will say. I mean, it's, when you get a code enforcement notice, it, it doesn't feel good. I mean, even if you know that, okay, I know that I need to do whatever. It's still, it kind of can hurt your feelings. And I think people just fly off the handle a little bit at her, but she does a great job and she works with the deputies really well. And so, um, they are kind of, especially with vehicles and stuff like that, they work together. So, yeah, thanks, Jerry. I think she's doing a great job.
And you have anything else for us?
Okay, yes. Um, just wanted to confirm that the city engineers continuing to make progress on the high-level water reservoir and the wastewater treatment plant, planning stages of that. And it's a really thorough process to get ready. But I think that you guys, I just want to say thank you for the thoughtfulness that you put in to making recommendations for that wastewater treatment facilities plan update. I, I would not have, um, even thought of the ideas that you guys came up with. And I think that you've come up with some really, um, forward-thinking ideas as far as moving the plant, getting that off of like the first thing you see when you're coming into Estacada. Um, and it's going well. They're, they're working through that, the process of how to move forward with that. And then once we have enough information, we are, um, going to be holding some open houses to reach out specifically to stakeholders that might be in the, in the areas that we're looking at for, um, locating the wastewater facility. But also, um, just open to the public in general. I think more information is better than less. So we'll be getting those on the calendar shortly. When I say shortly, it's always longer than I think it's going to be. But it is, it's in the works. Um, and then, let's see, the best news so far is an update on Wade Creek Park Three. And, uh, we had a great time at the fundraiser yesterday that Parks and Rec posted to do some fundraising for the community building there. And I am very happy to announce that we've reached our goal of the, um, two hundred thousand dollars in local donations. To, so we had to do that. We had to, it was a matching grant that we got from the Ford Family Foundation. So they would match whatever donations we have, they'll match that, but they'll go all the way up to two hundred thousand. And we are very, especially thankful for Bill Highlands and Cedar Ridge Homes who worked collaboratively so that Bill could, um, meet, in order to meet the deadline, because our deadline is, is Wednesday, the thirty-first, Thursday, the thirty-first, yeah, um, to raise that two hundred thousand dollars. And Bill was able to donate seventy-nine thousand dollars to, um, get us across that finish line. And, um, so we are with, and everybody else, I mean, donations have been coming in. And that people will send in a check or donate online and it's been phenomenal. And then the, the Parks and Rec fundraiser and PGE made a donation recently, um, of five thousand dollars. And so it's been, we've been inching along and then Bill just put us over the edge. So we're very thankful. And then the last thing, April eleventh, we would, uh, we'd, I'd like to have an urban renewal meeting to meet at six-thirty and talk about the Main Street program again, or the Main Street project. The last that we had, um, talked about is that we wanted to set a timeline for when, when we're going to finish the design, how we're going to do our public outreach, um, and then when construction would be. So I'd like to just talk about that for a little bit. Give an update on our finances and that'll be at the six-thirt- a six-thirty urban renewal meeting. I think a half an hour will be long enough if we don't chat too much. So, yeah. Thank you.
All right. We thank you for that report. That was very in-depth. We appreciate that. Uh, we are now at council business. So we have the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit acknowledgement.
Okay.
Maybe you could enlighten us on that.
Yes, I will speak to that. Um, every year, the city has an audit done. They provide financial statements and they go through all of our, um, processes that we use, especially in a small organization. There's controls, internal controls, they call them, so to make sure that like the same person isn't, um, receiving the bill, writing the check, signing the checks. I mean, you know, there's, there's a division of roles that we have and there's processes that we follow. And the audit always checks those processes. Um, and so we, this on the twenty-twenty-one or the, yeah, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit, we had a couple of findings, which is not common for us. Usually, um, if there, there's findings, but they're minor. And so, and we do take it very seriously if there's, if the audit auditor makes recommendations to the city. Because we do work hard to follow those internal controls for transparency and for good management of the city, um, finances. And sometimes findings happen. Um, we, we got a couple of different findings, um, this year. And so we need to address them and we made an action plan. And that needs to get, the action plan needs to get acknowledged by the city council and sent to the Secretary of State. And that was included, um, and then stick to that plan, uh, which is already in place. So, um, there, there's the letter to the Secretary of State that will have the mayor sign and I will sign, um, that acknowledges that. Their first one was that invoices were paid outside the normal routine for payments. And so we didn't follow the process and we made a couple, just a couple of payments. We do have a paper trail for that. But it wasn't our standard process. And then secondly, when we were doing the household assistance program at the end of twenty-twenty, rather than writing checks for people, which we, is how we should have done it, we've got gift cards. So people who were, who applied for that program and qualified, um, could then just take that gift card and go get the things that they needed. But that was not a good process according to the auditor. So, and we do have a paper trail to back that up also. But it's, we're making corrections. And if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And other than that, we're just gonna stick to the plan, send this letter to the auditor and, and move on forward.
Sounds like good practices. I don't think any of us need to comment on that. I think you pretty much fixed the issue and, uh,
Yes.
if there's anything that we could do in the future to help, so this doesn't happen again. So we're not, we've had a good record, so I don't want that to become a habit.
Right, exactly.
But yeah, no, we appreciate you. Thank you.
I moved to adopt the plan of action to address the findings communicated in the June tw- in the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one audit. Second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are at the twenty-twenty-two, uh, council goals.
Okay. Um, this is just a, I just thought I'd give you a quick little recap of the, of, actually, I'm not going to go through them all because it will take too much time. But I want you to know that we're re- like going over the, this is like the, just to, you know, go through it and say, okay, what have we, have we worked on this this week? Have we moved something forward? Um, are we focusing on the, the priorities that, um, we really need to keep, um, keep at the forefront? You know, not maturing in the minors, which could, that can happen. I could do email all day long, just responding to stuff. But making sure that we're moving these goals forward. Um, and so, just, I was gonna go like give you an update on some things, but I did connect with the fire chief this week and let him know that he's there, always welcome. It sounded like they might, um, be, you know, they would be willing to come over and give us a, an update once in a while. But I wanted him to know they're always welcome to come over and, uh, be at our meetings. And then Chamber of Commerce, uh, reach out to Chamber of Commerce, understand their work and improve their partnership. And we actually had an opportunity come up just recently for, we looked at, uh, possibly partnering with the Chamber on a grant. That would be to help businesses. It, but it turned out, it turned out to be too, there's too many strings attached and it was too complex of a program for either, we thought if the chamber could manage it, then we could assist. And I'm not sure why we thought if we couldn't manage it and assist, then why we thought they would. But we thought together we could. Anyway, it didn't, it didn't work out, but there's some good, um, good collaboration going on with them right now. We'll be setting the timeline, there is set timeline design for design engineering and construction of, of Main Street. We'll be doing that on April eleventh. Um, just a couple of other things that I will highlight. Oh, we, so before, um, Matt moved on to a different position, he turned in a grant to Oregon State Marine Board for some funds to help us get the Lake Shore project to a hundred percent, um, construction drawings. And we got notified from the, the Oregon State Marine Board that, uh, we are welcome to come and give a presentation. We weren't like at the top of the list and they have lim- very limited funds. So I don't know if it's actually going to go anywhere, but we'll be given a presentation on April seventh to the, to the board at their board meeting. We can do it, it's in Bend, but we can do it via Zoom. And we'll see where that goes. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that I added in the, under administration, the sustainability and responsible practices goal. To identify and implement environmentally active, sustainable and responsible practices that will protect our natural resources, residents and habitat. And I put some, um, progress, things that we can look at. I don't have like specific, I don't have a specific plan of how to make that happen, but that, I think having it in there is excellent. And we will, we'll use that lens to, as we look through the, the choices that we make in our operations and our, you know, as we update our facilities to make sure that we're, um, making sustainable choices. So, that is the, the council goals, quick update and an addition. And I would like to, um, request that those would be adopted. And I know I'd, I'd like to move, maybe take a different approach to goals in the future, but I think this will keep us moving through the year as we have so many plates spinning right now, um, to keep going. So if you're agreeable to that, I would, or have any questions. Okay.
I don't think she needs to vote. You don't need to vote.
Um, yeah, if you could, yeah, could you make a motion to?
I've moved to adopt the twenty-twenty-two city council goals as presented.
All right, we have first on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are at the second consideration for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five, an annexation of zone change, local file number twenty-twenty-two dash zero-one annex. Okay, so this is the second, it's been on the floor before, and I have a motion.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are at the next citizen and community group comment. Do I have any on the chat? No, okay. I don't have any forms in front of me, so I'm gonna take that as no. We are now at the mayor council reports and comments. So I will start off with you, Jerry.
Well, first off, I want to say, wow, Bill Highlands, wow, seventy nine, did I hear that right? Seventy-nine thousand dollars?
Yes, you did. And we are very grateful.
Wow, um, that is amazing. Um, uh, thank you all for, uh, being here. Sorry, I couldn't make it there in person tonight. But, um, staff, uh, presented a great packet. I'd had zero questions, didn't have to, um, didn't have to waste Melanie's time with the phone call. So I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, uh, thank you guys for everything you do.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, uh, thanks, guys. Melanie, congrats. Appreciate everybody's time. I'll keep it short and sweet. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you to city staff. And I just wanted to take a quick moment to congratulate, uh, Troy Cotser. I think I'm pronouncing that correctly, who was a deaf actor who won an Academy Award yesterday for support, best supporting actor. Um, and it's always really nice to see the deaf community supported or featured and, uh, represented in media. So to see someone who is in the deaf community and uses ASL as their primary language, being given an award as such as the Oscar was just really amazing for the deaf community. And I just wanted to take a minute to publicly celebrate that. So thank you to everybody.
Nice, thank you.
Had a chance to attend the fundraiser yesterday, spring into, uh, sprint into spring. And it was just such a great event. Uh, hats off to Parks and Rec group for putting together that for us. It's, it was great to see it turn out. Look forward to more events like that, that, uh, can kind of celebrate the community of Estacada. Otherwise, thanks to staff for a good evening tonight.
Thank you. Um, not too much. Uh, just want to say that, uh, during our community meeting yesterday, I recognized a familiar face walking down Lake Shore. It was, uh, Jane, Representative James Heath. Was actually out in Estacada yesterday, kept wandering around, knocking on doors. He's the one who took over for Christine Drayson in our district. And, uh, something to note for city staff is while talking to his chief of staff, um, and his campaign manager, he mentioned that James just freed up a hundred million dollars back into our district for projects such as, I don't know, wastewater treatment plants. So, side note. That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Charity.
Yeah, um, thanks, everybody, for a short and sweet evening. Uh, congratulations again to Melanie, very excited. And, um, really amazing news about Wade Creek Phase Three. I'm, yeah, I'm stoked about that. Yeah, great job, everybody. And, um, yeah, thanks for short and sweet.
And Melanie, thank you. Staff, thank you. And audience, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.